Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call the March 13th, 2018 council meeting to order. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Here.
We do have a quorum present. I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the prayer and the pledge with me, please. I ask everyone to bow their heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all that we've seen in it and all that you have meant for it to be. We ask you right now, Lord God, to just come into this room and fill this place with your presence as we conduct the business of your city and we conduct it for your residents. We thank you in your mighty Son, Jesus' name. And everyone say, "Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I assume everybody's here tonight to look at my pretty face. That was just an inside joke. It's good to have everybody here tonight to come out and to be informed about what's going on in our city. And our city has had much success in the year past. So tonight, I'm going to give you the City of Millersville State of the City address, 2017 highlights and review. Can you all see that or do we need to dim the lights just a little bit for everyone? Hang it. Oh. We, um, I'm pleased as the new mayor of the City of Millersville of the accomplishments that the city has, um, has accomplished in the last year. First and foremost, I'd like to just give recognition to all of our city elected officials, everyone you see up here tonight, because they all played a part in everything that we have seen happen over the last year. Oftentimes, we don't go back and give people their flowers while they're living. And so, I'd like to go back and even recognize our former mayor, Mr. Thor, for all of his assistance that he gave in the last couple of years to make sure that we move Millersville forward. You all know all of the elected officials here tonight because you re-elected them based on the great work that they have already done. I thank Mr. Jared. He does an excellent job as our city manager. Our city attorney, Mr. Jordan. Our clerk over here, Mr. Boe, and Ms. Melba. But not to mention just them, but all of our department heads that are here tonight that it took to make up all of this great work that you've seen accomplished in Millersville over the last year. So I want to give them a hand tonight for all their hard work and effort. On our first slide, we're going to talk about tonight is our economic development. Many of the items I will be sharing with you tonight throughout this presentation will have a direct or indirect effect on the economic development of our community. With that being said, I want to give you just a few items of information that have a direct and complete effect on the economic viability of our city. 2017, we saw 13 new or rehab businesses in the City of Millersville. Some of them are to include the Roost, I don't know if we have that up there, Bills on North Columbia, PetSmart Citizens Bank on Executive Parkway, Cravings on West Hancock Street, The Fresh Market on North Columbia Street, Firefly Boutique on West Hancock, and Hope's Creation Bakery on North Jefferson. The city received $678,277 community development block grant for infrastructure in the River Van area. The city was awarded $397,000 in an aggregate Georgia Department of Transportation Local Tax Maintenance and Improvement Grant, the Elmick Fund for the City of Millersville Street Resurfacing. This grant funding is being combined with the local SPLOTS prior year in the Elmick and supplement CSH Elmick funds into $2 million paving project program for awards this year, combined solicitation in the largest locally bid paving project in the city's history. The City of Millersville directly and financially support agencies whose sole mission is that of economic development, tourism, and/or education and youth services, all of which have an effect on economic development. This includes the Central State Hospital Local Redevelopment Authority, the Development Authority of Millersville and Ballin County, assisted to purchase the new mega site industrial park, Allied Arts, Twin Lakes Library System, Georgia Annabellum Capital Museum, and communities and schools. They continue to provide management of the city's opportunity zone, which created $14,333,054 in private investments and $6,469,505 in public investment during 2017. In our executive department, the city seal was redesigned by the city employees, and the new seal was adopted by the ordinance in February of 2017. After redesign and adoption, a seal sign was commissioned and fabricated and hung in the city council chamber in August of 2017. The seal displays were also installed on windows in City Hall and the Economic Development Center. The city provided and all city employees participated in customer service training. The city sponsored, funded, and coordinated the citywide fireworks display in July of 2017. The event was held at the Central Georgia Technical College. Additional sponsors for the display included Zambly Fireworks, Central Georgia Technical College, the Junior Recorder, and the Baldwin Bulletin in kind support. The city hosted its first boards meeting appreciation dinner in October of 2017. The dinner was held in the honor of all city-appointed board members to show appreciation for the time and service that they have selfishly given while participating on volunteer boards. The board members were treated to a barbecue dinner, a live music performance, and a gift bag with a city memorabilia. Youth Game Changers is a leadership action program that brings together 50 of Georgia's brightest minds under the age of 40 to help solve persistent challenges of one of Georgia's community. Each class works for six months to generate big ideas and recommendations for persistent challenges in a Georgia community, which they present to the community at the conclusion of the program. Finally, recommendations from this group was presented in the fall of 2017, and through a generous grant from the Knight Foundation, through the Central Georgia Community Foundation, the City of Millersville is working on a wayfinding signage plan and implementation. The City of Millersville proudly hosted the swearing-in ceremony for the mayor and alderman that were elected to serve for the 2018-2022 term on December 29, 2017. The public was invited afterwards to enjoy refreshments and to meet and interact with the elected officials in the council chamber. The next one is our finance. The Government Finance Officers Association established the Certificate of Achievement for the Excellence in Financial Reporting Program, CAFR, in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirits of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. The City of Millersville has received this recognition each year for the previous 31 years. In addition to receiving this award, the finance department was instrumental in ensuring that the city maintains compliance with all federal and state statutes regarding local government and accounting. Procurement Coordinator Jackie Hughley received a service award for serving as treasurer for the Governmental Purchasing Association of Georgia, GPAG. This organization, a chapter of the National Institution of Governmental Purchasing, is a nonprofit professional organization that promotes continuing education, high ethical standards, and professionalism in public purchasing. Accounting Manager Shay Danzy completed the 2017 Advanced Government Finance Institution Government Finance Officers Association Training Program with the Wisconsin School of Business. This week-long intensive program provides selected GFOA members from across the United States and Canada the opportunity to enhance their leadership skills and focus on emerging trends with the public finance community. Only 50 qualified candidates are selected based on their professional experience. Ms. Danzy also receives the service award for the position of Treasurer of GGFOA, the Georgia Governmental Financial Association. GGFOA was established in 1985 as a nonprofit organization with a mission to promote and foster excellence in governmental financial management through programs that enhance the abilities of the governmental finance professionals. The city's pension fund maintains a level of funding that surpasses state funding averages from the municipalities with defined benefits pension programs. With comprehensive budgeting and forecasting, the city continues to maintain pension funds for levels in 90 percentiles. The annual budget for the fiscal year 2017 was completed with no need for budgetary amendments. The finance department is responsible for making financial forecasts that keeps the city financials projects as accurate as possible and practical. Through GGFOA and the Carl Wilson Institute of Government, local governmental staff members can become certified local government finance officers. Level 1 requires 108 of instruction, and Level 2, the highest level, requires an additional 84 hours of instruction. The City of Millersville has three staff members in the finance department which hold the Level 2 certification. All continuing education hours have been maintained for Level 2 certification as local government certified finance officers. Continue to streamline payroll, accounts payable, purchasing, utility bills, business license, alcohol license, and property tax process to maximize time, efficiency, and accuracy. We thank them for the excellent job that they do. That is extraordinary to not have to go back and amend the budget, but to work from the budget as they have done. Our next area is the human resource. Successfully provide human resource administrations for 193 city employees, including various insurance programs, hiring, retirements, and attrition, and personal policies and procedures. The city was selected by the Georgia Municipal Association to receive one of the employee health and well-being incentive grants to promote worksite programs to design, enhance the health and well-being of city employees and family members. The awards are made to members of the GMA, Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System, Life and Health Insurance Fund, underwritten by Blue Cross Blue Shield, based on a city's commitment to employee health and demonstrate collaboration with community groups and organizations engaged in health promotion. The city's 2017 grant was for $8,000. The grant funded the program shown as well as others, an annual health fair where all employees are able to obtain complete blood work and cardiovascular screenings. Due to the importance of this function and the marketing of the Human Resource Department, the health fair had the largest employee turnout since it started. The Human Resource Staff attended the Local Government Risk Management Service, Georgia Municipal Association Leadership Training, which offered training programs on a variety of topics to give members of the GMA Risk Management Funds information that will help improve their loss control efforts. Staffs also attended the Georgia Local Government Personnel Association Conference, which is designed to enhance the knowledge, skills, and ability of those persons responsible for the management and administration of personnel system in the local government in Georgia. With great success, planned, coordinated, and managed annual City of Millersville Employee Appreciation Luncheon for over 200 employees. And they started a new employee newsletter, which will be used to communicate both City of Millersville news and personal news about the city's great employees. Main Street, our DDA department. Millersville Main Street DDA Executive Director Carly Schultz served as Vice President of the Georgia Downtown Association and will serve as its president in 2018. The Georgia Downtown Association is a nonprofit association that promotes the economic redevelopment of Georgia's traditional downtown. Through advocacy, education, and marketing, GDA works to focus the public's attention on the value of downtown. GDA is an independent association that supports both public and private sector efforts targeted at enhancing Georgia's downtown. Two Boost Grants totaling $2,000 were awarded to downtown businesses. Boost is a downtown development authority Millersville Main Street program designed to assist small business and entrepreneurs in Millersville with funding needs. Our investors are people just like you who care about our town and have a strong desire to see all grow and prosper. We recognize the contribution small business owners and entrepreneurs make to our local economy, and we want to help. The DDA hosted five monthly second Saturday sales averaging seven vendors and 150 to 200 visitors at each event. This was a new program coming from a revamped farmers market and is held at the Pavilion in downtown Millersville, which is located at 222 East Hancock Street next to the Golden Pantry. They also coordinated treats for Halloween. This event is a merchant favorite. Main Street organizes with the downtown merchants and the local daycares to have about 400 trick-or-treaters come downtown on Halloween. Main Street encourages the merchants to include coupons and promotional material for their business. Planned and hosted by the annual Polar Express Trolley Ride, the Polar Express Trolley Ride is Main Street's newest event and is a revenue generating event for the Main Street DDA. Main Street doubled the amount of rides given and doubled their profits for 2017. The proceeds will go to help the hometown celebration, and that will be coming up in May of 2018. Also, they had in 2017, Deep Roots Festival brought approximately 17,000 visitors to our community. A longtime favorite of locals, tourists, and college students alike, Deep Roots is a lively cultural arts and musical festival that brings historical downtown Millersville to life like nothing else. It beckons travelers from all over with an antique car show, live entertainment ranging from bluegrass root to rock and roll, artist market, and a kid's zone. A day at the festival will allow you to see talent, art, and products from national, regional, and local individuals and businesses. The festival also plays host to the Georgia Barbecue Association's state championship featuring the ever-popular People's Choice Award that draws barbecue connoisseurs from around the southeast. Hosted nine First Friday events and partnered with more than 20 communities and organizations. First Friday encouraged the celebration and exploration of all the downtown Millersville has to offer. Participating First Friday merchants, restaurants, cultural venues, and nightlife hotspots stay open late, present special events, and offer discounts on First Friday of every month, making downtown Millersville an ideal destination for an evening out. Millersville Main Street works with merchants and sponsors to organize and promote First Friday. Millersville Main Street and the First Friday Committee is the organization behind the scenes bringing Millersville First Friday event to the community. Through the mission to bring people downtown to socialize, enjoy entertainers, artists, and shop, they have helped to transform downtown Millersville into a more family-friendly community and diverse group of people to downtown Millersville. The hometown celebration started in 2014 when Millersville became a great American Main Street city. The celebration was so successful, citizens asked for the event to become an annual affair. In 2017, the event was celebrated twice, once in April to take advantage of Georgia's beautiful spring weather, and the other in August. The date for 2018 annual hometown celebration has not been determined yet. I'll take that bad it has for May of 2018. But a spring date is being evaluated. The 100 block of West Hancock Street will be open to pedestrians for the celebration, and bands will play throughout the evening. There will be activities the entire family can enjoy. Local groups will be out to help the activities going, and downtown businesses will have special sales going on. Our next area is planning and zoning, and I'm trying to touch every area and give you some overview into the area. So what I'm going to do is just touch these spaces because she has the power plant running for you. In the planning and zoning code enforcement, they continued infrastructure improvements in Riverview area funded by receipt of $678,277 in the CDGB grant. They issued 525 building permits most requiring inspection. Held 14 Planning and Zoning Board public hearings. They issued 25 certificates of appropriateness. Held five zoning appeal planning hearings and appointed one new planning and zoning On our public safety, the Millersville Police Department awarded five Georgia Association of Chiefs a police certificate. Carrying and Concealed Courses sees growth. Officers received the MADD DUI awards and the Millersville Awards statewide agency of the year for MADD Golden Shield. The Millersville Police Department was awarded its fifth state certificate of the Georgia Association of Chief of Police. And they also carried, did a carry and conceal course return for a second time in February of 2016, with twice as many participants at its first course, which took place in June of 2016. For a second year in the role, Officers Ryan Chapel, David, I don't want to say that name wrong, Chief, can you help me with this?
Dakota.
Dakota, were among many law enforcement agencies from across the state of Georgia who were recognized for the DUI enforcement at the 13th Annual MADD Golden Shield Honors Banquet at the Cobb Gallerial Center in Atlanta. These two MPD officers were honored for obtaining more than 25 DUI arrests in 2016. On our public safety, under the police, the Millersville Public Information Officer Felicia Cummings was nominated for a 2017 Jefferson Award in August. The Jefferson Award program recognizes those individuals who commit to community service has had a positive impact on the community they serve. Nominees are chosen from the Baldwin, Bill, Blakely, Crawford, Dodge, Dooley, Hancock, Houston, Jones, Lawrence, Macon, Monroe, Peach, Pulaski, Putnam, Taylor, Telfair, Truettland, Twigs, Washington, Wilcox, and Wickerson County areas. As a local Jefferson Award winner, Cummings was presented with a Jefferson Award medallion, and her contributions to the City of Millersville as PIO was highlighted in a WGXA news broadcast. Her award nomination secured her as finalist to be chosen and a middle Georgia representative to compete in the National Jefferson Award competition in Washington DC in June. In September, the Millersville Police Department announced instructor accomplishments of Officer Eugene McKinley and Detective Scott Goodwin. McKinley and Goodwin became one of the five officers of the state of Georgia who are the Valor for instructors. The Valor Program was established in 2010 by the US Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Association as a response to growing trends in violence against law enforcement And then 2017 ended with the recognition of Officer Michael Thompson as Officer of the Year by the Masons of Benevolent Lodge Number Three. Chief Swiger presented Thompson with the Community Service Award on behalf of the Police Department during the largest bicentennial celebration at Georgia College Magnolias Ballroom. And then our public safety continued with our fire department. They responded to 1,613 calls. They participated in the Muscular Dysphagia Association boot drive, set up fire safety house, and assisted with various community service projects. Installed Christmas decorations on City Hall, train and search and rescue, ladders, boats, and river rescue, and live fire. Installed smoke detectors at various locations around the city. And hired three new firefighters and purchased new equipment and furniture for each station. Our public works department, they completed 575 work orders, active or completed, totaling 50,300 direct man-hours, collected 1,129 tons of curbside yard debris, hurricane Irma storm damage recovery, storm damage improvements, new fuel maintenance systems. Public Works Superintendent Will Brown named Chairman of Georgia Membership for APWA and the Elmick Projects. Public and Works Engineering, State Route Resurfacing, Streetskate Phases Four, T-Spots Investment Listings, Safe Dam Programs, Broadway LED Project, and Lincoln Street Right-of-Way, and also the Twin Lakes Library WiFi Projects. Water and Sewer Department received the Gold Award for Georgia Association of Water Professionals, received a grant from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program of FEMA, employee certifications, and Jiffa loan, architect, and engineering for a new water treatment plant and commencement. Water and Sewer Department, they enhanced Millersville Fog Program, they continued Millersville CMO, Seamun Program, is that correct? Seamun Program, upgraded and/or maintained employee certification, successfully completed EPD inspections, continued industrial pretreatment program, and MWPCP highlights. Our Allied Arts Department, over 1,075 audience members for Allen Markets Concerts. They hosted eight exhibits visited by 990 individuals, over 800 K through 12 students educated, co-sponsored jazz festivals with the Georgia College and Millersville Main Street, sponsored and provided summer camps to over 160 students, and hosted book signings with local artists. Twin Lakes Library System, they received $250,000 grant for building renovations, awarded $50,000 grant for creation of business incubator, awarded $13,400 grant for civic engagement, received $15,000 grant for rural broadband innovation, 120,000 visitors, 140,000 books, and 1,200 readers. Central State Hospital Local Redevelopment Authority, they continued growth for the Bostic Center, the Youth Challenge Academy graduated its third class, State of Georgia Commitment, Georgia International Food Center, home to 10 small companies and/or nonprofit And looking to the future, we have street improvements, and they're going on right now. Fishing Creek Community Trail Extension, water treatment plant, city park improvements, downtown parking, zoning, mortarium, Development Authority of Millersville and Ballin County, and Central State Local Redevelopment Authority is what we have going on in our future improvements. We look forward to these projects and others during 2018, and we want to thank each of you, the citizens of our community, for your support throughout the past year. The City of Millersville is rapidly growing, and with everybody's continued help and everybody's support, we'll continue to grow. The city of Millersville is rapidly growing, and with everybody's continued help and everybody's support, we'll continue to grow. I want to, uh, commend everybody for all your outstanding works, and we ask that you continue to work with the city as the city continues to work with the community to grow us as a, uh, vital town once again. Again, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you all, all the department heads for all your outstanding work that you do, and to each and every one of you all for coming out tonight just to be informed of what's going on in your city. That's our report on the city of Millersville, the state of the city addressed. Give me a second. Thank Mr. Hank Griffin. He put this report together for me. Thank you, Mr. Hank.
Feel like the alarm just went off. Time to get up.
All right. Thank you all for all my reading. Now I feel like I'm about to choke on everything I just read. All right. All right. You all have received a copy of the February twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen council minute, meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or any discussions? Do I, do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to adopt.
Second. I'll ask the clerk, clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. We have a public hearing tonight. Uh, the public hearing we have to consider tonight is audience zero dash eighteen oh three dash zero zero one to consider the rezoning, um, the property located at two, two-four East Walton Street.
Eighteen oh one, zero zero one.
Eighteen oh one, yeah, he's got eighteen oh three. Okay, eighteen oh one dash zero zero one, uh, to consider the rezoning, uh, the property located at two, two-four East Walton Street from S F R one to C C to commercial. As the public, uh, hearing being properly posted and advertised.
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I'll ask clerk to, uh, read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending, the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two known as the Land Development Code in the city of Millersville, Georgia. Ordinance rezones property located two twenty-four East Walton Street from S F R two to C C.
Okay, I will, uh, recognize the zoning administrator for a report to include, uh, the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The commission unanimously approved this at its meeting, and this property is currently zoned S F four-two. The applicant's designed to rezone it to C C, and this property's really always been used commercial. But when the, um, new zoning map was created in two thousand and two, it was zoned to S F four-two. It's always been used commercial, but then it lay dormant for a year, and so now to keep it back to its commercial use, he needed to rezone it.
Uh, is the applicant or anyone else present who would, uh, like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Yes, uh, my name is Frank Pennergast, one thirty-six Northwoods Drive, Millersville, Georgia. This is my property. Trying to get it rezoned back to what it was. I'm here for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Is there anyone who is present, uh, who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? You have heard the ordinance and had an opportunity for discussion and question. This conclude that presentation of evidence. Do I hear a motion on the amendment?
Motion we approve the findings of the Planning and Zoning Board?
Second.
Let's clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
All right, I'll move on to new business and, uh, ask the clerk to read Resolution R eighteen oh three. Zero zero one by caption.
To authorize lease and maintenance agreement with Rico USA Incorporated for a copier to be shared in the planning and zoning inspections, human resources, and engineering departments.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Back motion, we're not.
Second.
Is there any discussion on proposed resolution? I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
The resolution is approved. I will ask clerk to read Resolution R eighteen oh three, zero dash one-two by caption.
To authorize a service contract with J Corbett Enterprises Incorporated to provide cemetery grounds maintenance for Memory Hill, Bone, Westview, and Riverside View Cemeteries.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. I will move to new business and I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution eighteen oh three dash zero one-three by, by caption.
We just down, I'm sorry, that was misnumbered, so that should be correct. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, this is a resolution to amend fiscal year two thousand and eighteen annual operating budget list of full-time equivalents to increase the starting pay grade of the G I S C A D operator position in the Water and Sewer Administration from pay grade eighteen to pay grade twenty.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Ask the clerk to call the roll. I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on the proposed resolution? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
No.
Resolution is approved. We have one appointment to make to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The chair will entertain a motion on the appointment.
The, the appointment is yours to make. It needs to be confirmed by the, uh, by the council.
Okay.
The appointment is David Grant as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, um, it's, okay, then, um, the appointment for Mr. David Grant, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, to be, uh, reappointed, are we reappointing him back tonight?
Mm-hmm, to the planning and zoning, to the.
Okay, we're reap- uh, appointing him back to the Planning and Zoning, um, board tonight. So I need a, a, can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
The nomination is approved, and Mr. Grant is appointed to the planning, reappointed to the planning and zoning.
We'll need to take a vote on that, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, uh, clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Nomination is approved, and Mr. Grant is reappointed to the planning and zoning. The next item is an alcohol license application for the local yokel to add catering to their, uh, existing consumption on premises license. I'll ask the clerk to present the application.
This is, um, Clifton Burke Charles the second on behalf of Stugard Light Blue LLC doing business as a local yokel for at one seventeen West Hancock Street, Suite A. And it is to amend his current alcohol license to add, um, a catering, um, license. Alcohol beverage catering license.
You've heard the application. Is there a motion?
Move we approve. Second.
I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
The addition is duly approved. This concludes the items on the agenda. Is there any further business to, uh, discuss? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.